At this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the July 3rd, 2012 City Council Meeting Agenda. We are here at City Hall. Please make a note for the record that one of our council members is not present. That's Laurel Perkel. All others are present and accounted for. To start off with, we're going to call this meeting to order and ask Pastor Isaac Duke with Brazos Covenant Ministries to lead us in our invocation. And we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance and then the Texas Pledge. If you would, please rise for the invocation.
Let's pray. Lord, in your Word, you say that life and death are in the power of the tongue. And so, Lord, I speak life over our city tonight. And I pray a blessing over our businesses. I pray the blessing of prosperity over our schools. Lord, I pray a blessing of peace. Lord, over our streets, I pray a blessing of peace. Over our entire community, Lord, as many are mourning and recovering from great loss, I pray peace. And over our city council, I pray this blessing from Numbers, Chapter 6. The Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord lift up his countenance upon you and give you peace. And I pray all this in Jesus' name.
And join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And honor the Texas flag, okay?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. As I mentioned, the first part of tonight's agenda is the City Council Open Microphone Session. I have one person who filled out a card and would like to speak to the council, Mr. Tom State your name and the address, and we'll start the little clock.
Hi, I'm Tom Baker, 1002 West Pearl. Thanks again for this opportunity for the open mic. My first comment is about Dina Boomer being selected for the Olympics in London. Granbury almost born a Brad, she was bred here, but she wasn't born here, but passed off to her for making the Olympics. My first, really my next comment is, when are we going to get the new T A B Tourism Advisory Board in session? We appointed it a month ago, and we're still waiting for somebody to get the meetings together and get rolling on it. Tourism's coming back this year, but we still need to get this committee together and focusing on our future tourism endeavors. Where's the leadership in council right now for the Opera House? Opera House has been closed since December of last year. We're talking, what, seven months now? We turned on the Quonset Hut, we've taken out the chairs, and that's about as far as we've gotten. Andrew's been on board now for seven months. His contract I hear is being talked about tonight, great, we need to keep him on. The original schedule is open up the Opera House in December of this year. Now we're talking about February, March of next year. You know, that's going to be 15, 16 months from when we close it. Fortunately, the play is at the Courthouse this past weekend and the previous weekend have been very successful. I think there's some talk that half the people came from the Dallas area, which were bringing people from out of town or spending the night. A lot of people were coming from Vicar de Nova and Pecan, and of course, people here from the city. But, you know, basically, sellout crowds every night, even putting some people up in the jury box because they had extra people and not enough seats in their regular audience for them. But obviously, there's people here that want the Opera House back open again. Do we have working plans? Do we have any idea about subcontractors? When are we going to get moving on it? We've got to get it back open again. And remember, there's elections coming up in November of this year and next, so people will remember what's happened with the lack of leadership. Thank you.
We'll close the open mic session and move on to the consent agenda. Council members, in your package, you were given the minutes from June 5th, 2012. I'd like to point out a few discrepancies that I noted. And first one is up in the Call to Order section. Strike the word "support" where it says, "And help support celebrate First National Bank." Just striking the word "support" will clear up that language in that sentence. And the second bullet point, strike the word "effort fundraiser," replace it with "fundraising effort." And then, at the end of that same sentence, it says, "To help support Granbury's 4th of July celebration." It was actually stated, "To help support Granbury Theater Company during the 4th of July celebration event." The next item I noticed was a change to read in Section 12-079. Right after Section 2, where it talks about P&amp;Z conditional denial, there's a paragraph starts off with following discussion. Mayor Pratt invited Harold Price to address council. Moving down about five lines, there's a, it mentions adequately support a lot of structures, and there are there two water sources. Reword that to read, and there are two water sources there. These are petty little things, but correction as time warrants. In Section 12-081, this is the section on discuss the status of the Opera House Improvement Project. It states that the architectural blueprint of the Granbury Opera House project can be viewed at Gaffin Architects/Opera House/... That should be gaffinarchitects, plural, dot com/Opera House. That's all I have. Any other council members have any amendments or adjustments to the minutes that you'd like to point out? This is the time to speak. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyra. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us to deliberation item number one. This time, we'll open a public hearing regarding a request of Prajwal Bohara for a specific use permit, also referred to as an S U P, for 1040 West Pearl Street to allow operation of a farmer's market and like commercial zoning district, and consider approval of an ordinance providing for said S U P. We heard about this piece of property previously, if I'm not mistaken, Scott, so if you can fill us in a little bit more about it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, City Council Members. What we have is a application on a lot of record that was platted as the Four Foxes addition. And what's being proposed is on the vacant portion of the platted property east of the Texaco, there's going to be a proposed farmer's market brought before you. The applicant, Mr. Bohara, realizes that the farmer's market requires an approved hard surface or parking area. He's proposing 10 vendor stalls. If the council approves the S U P as presented tonight, he knows he cannot commence the use until the parking and the hard surface for the vendor spaces has been installed and inspected by the city staff. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. P&amp;Z recommend approval as presented. I'll entertain any questions if you have any.
Scott, does this involve any overnight stay in there?
No, we really don't have in our supplemental regulations, any, anything that regulates hours. And you can see the supplemental regulations here. It calls out for facilities being on approved hard surface and meeting the T E P A requirements if they're proposing produce or food and getting a health permit. But we really don't have anything that outlines hours of operation. If that's a concern for council, certainly, we could add that to the S U P if you want to, standard business hours, 7 to 10, or 7 to 8. If you feel safe or comfortable doing that, we can certainly add that in.
Yeah, it's a little safer, you know, if downwind people take up residence there.
Absolutely.
That's all I got.
Thank you. One question I have is regarding a specific use permit for any kind of a timeframe. I notice this one does not come with any kind of a time restraint, such as one-year or three-year period. Can you explain why staff and P&amp;Z decided that wasn't required for this particular area?
Mayor, we brought that up in the staff report, just leaving it open, basically stating in the written form in the staff report that it's typical that we get term limitations on S U Ps, and we left that open to P&amp;Z, and they did not earmark a term limitation for this. So it's coming from P&amp;Z, open-ended with no term limitation. Certainly, we can, for example, if memory serves, we had about a three-year one downtown for the one on the square, and I think we had a three- or five-year one for H E B. So certainly, we can, in all sense of equity, apply one in this case as well.
Anybody else on council have any questions for staff?
I've got one on H E B, and I think we did the same on Square. Didn't we give them certain non-stop rates? I know we did H E B.
Yeah, and in that case, H E B asked, it came to you as an application for the month of May, I believe, and that's how the application was submitted by the applicant, H E B, what that they wanted to do it for the month of May. And P&amp;Z extended that, and council further extended it from its original application. This particular application is coming to you, open-ended, with no date continuum, no month continuum, or no annual continuum being proposed. So you certainly have the discretion set on yourself.
If the owner of the city is thinking about, maybe you're about to operate out of there?
He hasn't, but he's present in the audience tonight.
Well, and Scott, if I could correct, as we read Section 29, it clearly states what can be sold and what's prohibited. So those items can be bought year-round. And so, as you saw, the council and P&amp;Z extend the H E B situation. This situation here, from a buyer's standpoint, would not be good for the owner. We want to see him have people there as often as he would like to have people there as often as they can sell those goods and approve. So I don't see any reason to put any kind of limitation on the months or the days that they can be there. I do agree with Mr. Hewlett that because there's people that live in that area, you know, there's residents across the street and around, it would be nice to see a time limitation on there, something that's effective, like you said, 7 to 10. That seems very reasonable and would be consistent with what's been done in the past. And the three years, by all means, would be something that I would be, that I think this council's done over and over. So yeah, I thought something open-ended by, thank you.
Mayor, I noticed there was two people with far it. Was there anybody called in or anything, Scott, that was against it?
Not to my knowledge, nobody's called in.
Do we have anybody from the public who would like to speak regarding this particular item? Do you have, council, do you have questions for Mr. Bohara? This time, we'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to approve the S U P for 1040 West Pearl Street to allow operation of a farmer's market and like commercial zoning district, and approve and consider approval of an ordinance providing for said S U P during the hours of operation of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily for a period of three years.
Still move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyra. We have a second by Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion regarding any of that motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Moving on to item number two, we'll open a public hearing and consider approval regarding a request of David Garringer and James and Bonnie Davis to replat lots 1283 through 1285 of the Indian Harbor Phase 17 addition to lots 1283R and 1285R of the Indian Harbor Phase 17 addition. Property is located at the cul-de-sac of Caneos Court in Indian Harbor and is located within the city's ETJ. It's my understanding that these are three lots going to be condensed to two adjoining property owners' lots, is that correct, Scott?
That's correct, Mayor. We're basically replating three lots of record into two, lowering the density. There's one existing developed site that currently has residents on it, as you can see in the aerial photo. The other is vacant. In the replat process, we're actually abandoning two common lot lines, and we've got supporting letters from the franchise utilities saying they have no investment interest in those utility easements. We also have supporting letters from the homeowners association saying that they support the replat application going from three to two. And we have also variances associated with this particular application. We have a variance to 39 and 45 to not extend an eight-inch water main along the street frontage. This is in Amud's Water District. There's a two-inch water line serving the area. It will not support a fire hydrant. The nearest fire hydrant on a six-inch line is about 800 feet away. We have a variance to 39 and 46 to not extend an eight-inch sewer main. All these platted lots do have and are permissible under the county standards for septic system. We have a variance for 318 and 410 not to improve Caneos Court to, from the county standard to an urban standard facility, and 48 to install streetlights. P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval of the variances as presented and the replat application as presented and submitted to the council.
Any questions from council for staff? Anybody in the public would like to speak regarding this item? We'll close the public hearing portion of this. Entertain a motion to approve the replat of lots 1283 through 1285 of the Indian Harbor Phase 17 addition to lots 1283R and 1285R of the Indian Harbor Phase 17 addition.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion regarding this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Moving right along, we're at item number three. This time, we'll open a public hearing and consider approval regarding a request of Lee Overstreet to preliminary plat a 4.578 acre tract of the YG Lipscomb survey, abstract number 322, as lot 1 block 1 of the Harbor Rose addition. The property is located north of the intersection of June Rose Court and South Morgan Street and is located in the city's ETJ. Scott, if I remember right, we saw previously that this item came for a preliminary plat. It was approved by council. That was over six months ago. Can you enlighten us why we're seeing it again, please?
That's correct, Mayor. Initially, what was proposed is for an RV area with a wash bay. That particular proposal did not materialize. Since that time, of course, the property is still in survey since that time. The plat has voided out. What's being presented to you is a one-lot, single-lot subdivision. Because it's in survey, it actually has to go through two rotations, preliminary and a final plat application. And what the applicant is desiring to do is actually show this as a preliminary, single-lot plat in order to take a month and a half of review off of the books and present this as a one-lot piece of land and market it. And what that does, in essence, is cuts a month and a half off if they actually have a buyer that wants to develop this. So as a part of that preliminary plat proposal, we have variances associated with that. We have a variance to 39 and 45 not to extend sanitary sewer. Our central sewer main is quite a distance away. We do have water nearby. There's no water variance. In fact, if you recall, we did have a plat on Nemo Court to the south where we extended the water line. And this particular plat application is showing the extension with the placement of a water line mid-lot through the area, so the developer knows that he will need to extend water to serve this area through the platted boundary. We also have our standard notes on the plat application saying, "At such time that sewer is made available, they'll pay the cost of extending it through." A sidewalk note is on there, as well as the engineering design note that addresses surface water runoff and drainage issues. That at such time this develops, we'll submit engineering plans to our city engineer as a part of the final plat process. With that summary, P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval of the variance to 39 and 45 to not extend sewer. We've got the note on the plat application, and 3968 to not install a commercial sidewalk along. The note is placed on the plat as well. P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval of variances and the plat application as presented.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions from council to staff regarding this item? Anybody in the public like to speak regarding this public hearing on this item? Not, we'll close the public hearing portion of it. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve a preliminary plat along with the aforementioned variances of a 4.578 acre tract of the YG Lipscomb survey, abstract number 322, as lot 1 block 1 of the Harbor Rose addition.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Hewlett, a second by, I didn't catch the second, by Mr. Allen. Any further discussion regarding this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Bringing up item number four, at this time, we'll open a public hearing and consider approval of an ordinance regarding a request of Brazos Harbor Association of Owners and the City of Granbury to rezone all lots located within the Brazos Harbor Mobile Home Park Phases 1, 2, and 3, from HUD code manufactured housing district to a planned development with a base district of HUD code manufactured housing district and multifamily. The property is located along Brazos Harbor Drive directly north of the intersection of Watermark Boulevard and Pearl Street. Now, Scott, I understand that we've got several existing lots that are already lots of record. These people are having to come before Z B A occasionally whenever something takes place and transpires on their selling or changing of their property. And this is sort of a blanket owners' association effort to raise the bar a little and meet current standards?
That's correct, Mayor. What we've done is take a step back. The area, when it set up its own new zoning districts, classified this as HUD code manufactured home, is the closest thing that would fit this particular development, existing development. And unfortunately, when that zoning district was created, this had some particular nuances that were unique outside of our standard zoning district. Since that time, a lot of the homeowners association, individual lot owners, if they had a problem, like they wanted a jacuzzi, or a carport, or cantilever-covered walkway, or to put their new HUD code home, or their RV, in an area, there were oftentimes setback encroachments to our standard district or some issues that wouldn't really dovetail in with their filed covenants or restrictions. So over the past couple of months, a gentleman by the name of Frank has worked with my staff, Casey and Shad, and has done a real good job of acquiring as many homeowner's signatures as possible in order to get this entire area that's bounded in red rezoned to a planned development which mimics their covenants and restrictions that they want to develop their own particular community to. So, long story short, that's what this PD does, is it basically takes their interest in their C and Rs, makes the PD out of it, and that will help alleviate any of these lot-by-lot, case-by-case trips to the Z B A in order to get them unhinged from coming back to the city in order to build what they need to build. Now, in the adoption ordinance, you have a development plan which is required with a PD, and you can see all the base standard requirements of our HUD code mobile home park requirements in blue. And you can see the PD requirements that really mimic their covenants and restrictions in red. There's one clerical addition that I was informed of early this morning. If you notice on building maximum height, you see owner, lots 1 through 28, tract A and B. If you look at the map, you'll see that 1 through 28 and tracks A and D are contiguous in kind of a group area of development. Basically, it's the southernmost portion of that. That tract A and B was not added to the side yard in unit size. So that does, as a clerical omission, that needs to be added to lots 1 through 28, including tract A and B as well. And that's on the slide for your information. Outside of that, you can see kind of the hardships. For example, lot size, the minimum HUD code mobile home requirement for a lot is 7,500 square feet. Their platted lots are 3,500 square feet. So you can kind of see the, it's pretty much out of kilter, and they really need to work within the confines of the PD. Outside of the tabulated differences between the two, again, tip of the hat to the people in the community that helped work with staff and actually get this PD set up. I think it'll help alleviate any kind of trips to Z B A and let them do what they need to do, which is consistent, not with the base zoning district, but also with the restrictions, without having to come to City Hall in order to get these things unhinged. So P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval of the PD as presented, and certainly, I'll entertain any questions if you have any.
Scott, is that going to permit them to, later on, be able to build? I mean, I don't know if there's a restriction there or not, where they can build a home that you can't move in or out of. Everything there right now is something you can hook onto and pull out, right?
Right. It's my understanding that right now, they cannot build a stick-built home, for example, and their covenants do not, well, it's breaking there, do not allow for a stick-built home either. So it's consistent with their covenants.
So that, so that won't change anything?
Now, the other little nuance, if you notice, the other base district is multifamily. Our zoning ordinance requires RV parks to be S U P and multifamily. So even though it's referenced that this is a twin HUD code manufactured home base district along with multifamily, there's a prohibition on multifamily to allow specifically RVs.
So you can have RV, you can get a multifamily RV.
Yeah, you could, that's the only way to allow the RVs, is why you're seeing multifamily here.
Mayor, I don't have any opposition. I just wanted to...
Any other questions for Scott regarding this? All right.
Yeah, I'm glad to see this come forward and want to thank you and the staff because it's very, it's very refreshing to see where we as a council, without any opposition, can relax and regulate. So thank you.
Any other questions for Scott on this?
I've got one, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Allen.
I'm for it because they want it, but I just got a question. What is, what benefit? I know, I see their benefit. What's our benefit as a city? Do we get to inspect now, or we didn't before? Is that what it is?
No, there's, I mean, we'll still do building inspections. This doesn't change anything that we do on the construction inspection side. The only thing that this does is hopefully alleviate the hardship of incompatible zoning districts and allow them to build consistently. We'll still inspect with their covenants and restrictions, and it ties the zoning district to their covenants and restrictions.
Is it a fair statement we'll have less burden on our staff as well, because they'll have the freedom to do things that they had to come to you all before?
Absolutely. Those public hearings at Z B A are time-consuming.
I like it.
Any other questions from council for staff? Anybody in the public want to speak regarding this item? This is your chance. Not, we'll close the public hearing portion of this. I'll entertain a motion to approve a rezoning ordinance for all lots located within the Brazos Harbor Mobile Home Park Phase 1, 2, and 3, located along Brazos Harbor Drive from HUD code manufactured housing district to a planned development with a base district of HUD code manufactured housing, along with a base district of multifamily zoning. zoning to allow for recreational vehicles only as designated by the covenants, conditions, and restrictions for the Brazos Harbor subdivision as presented, along with some additional language to the development plan to allow for tracks A and B in the side yard description.
So moved.
I'll take that from Mr. Tyra. Is a motion, need a second?
Give you a second.
Second from Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion regarding this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Brings us down to item number five. This time we'll open a public hearing and consider approval of an ordinance regarding a request of the City of Granberry at the written request of Lynn Mo Incorporated, who is the tenant of Pecan Crossing, to rezone 5284, Highway 377 East, being an approximate 7.7 acre tract of the Benjamin Green survey, abstract number 196, and the J Campbell survey, abstract number 122, from interim holding to light commercial. Scott, I understand this is out on the edge of town as you come in from the Fort Worth side. It's been zoned ever since it was incorporated within the city's annexation back in 2003 as interim holding. This is the first request we've had to actually bring it within our comprehensive plan to where it would be consistent with the plan as far as regular zoning. Can you give us some more insight?
Absolutely, Mayor. This particular piece of property, as you've mentioned, is, supports the residential structure that is located just to the west of the convenience store on the intersection southwest of Fall Creek Highway and US 377. As you mentioned, it's been annexed in the corporate boundary of the city for quite some time. As a part of the annexation process, we zone property generally interim holding. Interim holding is a placeholder until such time the property can be ready for development if it's vacant, or at such time that new COs come around. And that's the particular hardship of this property from what we can surmise in talking to the tenant. The property is owned by one party, it's basically held by trustees, and we have another tangible property owner who has ownership of the building and the improvements to the site that is desiring to get tenants in and out of this building under a long-term lease. As the property works in interim holding, you have a grandfathered status, and the captured grandfathered status that's registered basically is general office. So there's a lot of uses that can work outside of that, which the tenant cannot entertain, and which he's conveyed to staff, that there's a particular hardship in order to get tenants in and out under a certificate of occupancy. For example, we had a particular company that had office and support staff and field staff. Now, the office staff can actually get a CO, but the field staff, if they have contractor trucks, cannot, because it's an intensification of a use. Even a restaurant or a bakery is basically outside the confines of that category of uses. So staff could not issue a certificate of occupancy in an industrial or an interim holding zone, which proposes a potential problem if the tenant, or the person who has the lease, is trying to get tenants in and out. The other little particular nuance you need to be aware of is the property owner itself and your supporting information and your packet has filed a letter to the city stating that they clearly do not want the property rezoned to light commercial. So, here's the dilemma. We basically have a particular owner who has fiscal improvement ownership to property there, is trying to get tenants in and out, and businesses in and out, and is confined by the grandfathered status of the zoning district, and we have a property owner who owns the land, who does not want to have the property rezoned, and has submitted a letter to that effect. I will also inform you that the way the zoning ordinance works is if you get a, if you get a request from the property owner or those property owners 200 feet outside of that, and this includes the interior of the property that are in protest of this, that are greater than 20%, then it prompts a three-quarter vote by council in order to approve that. We did not receive any protest from the adjoining property owners outside, but the property inside constitutes about 36%, so it does prompt a three-quarter vote. And it's not the members present, and help me out, Mr. City Attorney, if I fall short of my mark here, but in essence, we need four of the four present in order to approve this tonight. So we can deliberate, you basically have the choice, we can deliberate, city council has the latitude to postpone it for a full council, whatever council's discretion certainly have the right to do. Outside of bringing the dynamics of this pretty unusual case to P&amp;Z and council staff is neutral on this. We're not pushing the pendulum one way or the other. It's just the uniqueness of this and the inability of the tenant in order to get businesses in and out poses as an unusual problem as we've seen in a long time. Staff will entertain, oh, P&amp;Z recommended approval of, by unanimous vote, approval of the rezoning request as presented at the P&amp;Z meeting.
Scott, I'm going to start off my line of questioning for you as a staff member, and we'll follow it up with some of the council members. Is light commercial consistent with the comprehensive plan of zoning?
It is. We do have an adopted comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan has this particular property earmarked for commercial activities. So there is latitude as an application to approve this, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Now, I will couch that, you don't, not every zoning case that comes before city council, you're burdened with approving it to the comprehensive plan, the burden is on the application itself. So it is consistent, you have the latitude to approve it to the comprehensive plan, but certainly the discretion is yours.
The other thing, it does require rezoning of the entire parent tract, is that correct? Are we looking at the entire parent tract when we're talking about this? Because I know that the leasee may not be the whole tract, but we do require the entire parent tract, is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor, and that's due to the language in our zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance requires that the zoning district be to the platted lot boundary or the tract boundary in order to entertain any kind of permit or inspection activity. So, in order to do that, we went to the tract boundary, and that comprises roughly 7.6 or 7.7 acres.
So this also moves some light commercial zoning on to Fall Creek Highway as well?
That's correct.
All right. Another one is, does this increase the land use entitlements by moving it out of interim holding? I believe you spoke about that. What are, what are some of the things that can happen if it goes light commercial, both of these tracts of land?
In a hypothetical situation, plus, it's still one tract of land.
I understand, but it's on, along two different highway frontages, I guess, is what I mean.
And it's unplatted, so they'll still have to go through the plating process. But to answer your question, if hypothetically it is rezoned to light commercial, what this does is open up the land use entitlements for the tenant to entertain certificates of occupancy beyond a very limited narrow scope of what's offered under the grandfathered status, which is solely office. For example, if a coachee shop, or a bakery, or a hot dog store, or a telemarketing business wants to go in there, all those uses are allowed by right light commercial, for example. So they, the city would administratively issue the certificate of occupancy.
Last question. Does it hurt the current property owner to have it moved from interim holding? Is it, is it going to cost him more tax dollars? Is this currently ag land? And is that going, that rezoning going to increase the tax burden for the appraisal?
I really can't answer that, because I don't work for the appraisal district, but what I can say from a land use planning perspective is that it opens up the land use entitlements and allows for more activity on the site. What the appraisal district does, if there's currently a ag exemption on the back, some portion of this, I'm unaware of. I don't have the particular specific information to address that facet of the question.
Okay, all right. Entertain any questions from council. Mr. Allen?
I've got two here. Scott, you said something in your open statement here about, so maybe we're trying to get them out of a long-term lease? What were you talking about?
No, what they have, I believe, is a long-term lease, and it, and the owner of the building is here, maybe he can illuminate that factual information more than I. I think it was in...
It's not wanting to get them out of a long-term lease, which stands nobody's...
No, from what I understand, the lease has been in effect since the 60s, and it expires in 2020, I believe, or around that time. So they still have about eight years on the lease, and they're having trouble getting certificates of occupancy.
All right. Next question is, not the exact number here, just kind of an ideal. When that property gets backed down to Route 377 splits there and comes to town, how much property do we have out there in the same coating, powder, pattern, is this here? Just guessing.
I, it's tough to hazard a guess, but I can tell you, based on my knowledge of the zoning map, that the property on this particular zoning initiative that took in from Fall Creek back to roughly where Mike Brown Ford is...
Or what is?
Mike Brown Ford.
Yes.
Is generally still interim holding. If you go back, that's the 380 or 400 acres is still interim holding. That's the Durant property that we saw at one time for a silica sand excavation, that's still, and that still takes up a lot of the 377 frontage, but once you get beyond that toward the Hyundai dealership, then you start getting into established commercial districts.
My question is, y'all had this on the plan for a long time, has it changed the zoning on this someday?
No. What we, what we generally, it's in the comprehensive plan, and what we generally do is basically annex property as interim holding and leave it up to the market and the development dynamics and the applicants to actually come forward with the plan.
I'm not a tax appraiser, because I argue with them every year, but I know if you got it in ag, you go to commercial, it's going to go up. I mean, that's just common. But if it's in our plan, if you as a planner of the city, wouldn't we be better off just do it all at one time? The whole 400 acres?
Well, that's...
500, 800, whatever it is?
That's a...
That's based upon a request by the property owner. In this case, it's a property owner of a building.
I understand, Mayor, but I'm just saying, he was saying, you know, this is in our plan.
Right, but the only thing we have right now before us is this particular tract.
So I can ask that question?
No, let's stick with this.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Tyra?
Thank you. The first question I have is to my colleagues. I want to make sure you all read that letter, say June 14th, 2012.
Can I get you to lift your mic up?
Yes. From the owner of the property, and as I took some time to look over this effort, this is clearly a situation, and I would, I want Scott to please, Scott, you have the right to correct me if I state something wrong, please do so immediately, okay? Because I've talked to you about this, and I've talked to other staff to make sure that we're on solid ground. But we have an individual who's leasing a building, and that individual who's leasing the building, if that person did not have the city bringing this forward, that individual person that signed the lease with the owner would not be able to bring this forward, only the owner could bring it forward. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct. My understanding, two parties can bring a zoning case, either the property owner of record or the city.
That's correct. So the property owner has a right to bring it forward, and the city. In this case, and it looks like that this lease goes back to 1965, and the city did this zoning situation by annexation in 2003, so that's been interim holding since 2003. And I will clarify what Mr. Allen said, is that I can promise you that when you go from holding and have it in a status at appraisal district, and it goes to light commercial or anything, the property taxes will go up. I believe at the very least, we're doing here, or the main point of this, this is why I have a real problem with this, sitting here as elected official, is we have a land owner who does not want to change the status of his or her property, this being a trust. They said, in fact, they wrote a letter, said, "No, we don't want this to happen." We have somebody who's leasing the property from them coming forward on their own, standing alone, they could not get this zoning change done. But because the city joined with them at their request, and I understand that, and I appreciate that the staff is holding a neutral position on this, as you clearly stated. You're allowing the council now to make this decision, staff's being neutral. That's what we are here for, so I appreciate that.
Do you have a question for...
Yes, I do, I have several, I have several. I just want to make sure the public understands...
Because we'll get into debate when it gets to be our part, and, okay, so stick with questions.
Let me ask them a question. So I'm going to follow up with, I went out there and looked at that, and I really didn't have to drive out there and look at it, because I've driven past it for seven years now, but that looks like some kind of portable type, manufactured type. It doesn't look like stick-built, you know, custom type shopping center. So what kind of buildings are those?
It almost appears as a modular building.
Modular, I think that's a better word for it.
But that...
You mentioned potential problem a while ago. Can you go a little bit more deeper into the potential problem you see? You mentioned the words potential problem with this.
With his COs?
Yes.
That the narrow scope of the particular classification as he's registered as a grandfathered non-conforming use limits it to office, specified office only. So he can have clerical staff support, clerical staff there, but outside of that framework, every time we, he has an interested individual or an interested party that wants to occupy a vacant space there, he's having a difficult time, and staff can certainly not operate and issue a certificate of occupancy out, outside the framework of that grandfathered status.
Scott, I want to try to break this down, so I can understand a little bit more, so I'm going to paraphrase it. So he can't lease to who he wants to lease right now because of the restrictions. I believe you told us it's only office, is that correct?
That's correct.
So if this goes into effect and the zoning is changed against the owner's wishes, he would be able to rent it to many more clients. Is that correct? He'd have more opportunity to rent it?
It will certainly open up the land use entitlement matrix to more classifications.
Is that what you meant a while ago, when you, when you described, you used the wording "in and out"? Do you mean that they're having a hard time getting out of the property, or just getting people in and out of the spaces he wants to rent?
Uh, in and out of the building.
Okay, thank you. This situation with interim holding, it looks like there's a lot of interim holding property in Granberry, and I understand the master plan. We have a master plan in effect. Is it a fair statement to say that our master plan that we have in effect, all the interim holdings out there, and been out there for years, and I believe this has been that way since 2003, and those restrictions have been in place because of our annexation since 2003, is that correct?
This is a similar situation from the areas that we annexed from 2003 on, all the way, in fact, down to Acton Triangle.
The triangle.
It was all, it was all interim holding, and we've seen over time spot rezoning requests in order to get certificates of occupancy processed.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Scott, I caught one, one thing there. How do they sell pecans out of there every year?
It's office sales. Yeah.
What do you mean?
What?
Well, they sell pecans out of there every year, right?
Yeah.
We all know that, we all buy them there. But that's not office.
Well, from my understanding, that was probably there in 2003, right? So we captured that particular use in 2003, and that type of use is grandfathered.
Any other questions for staff? I do have a couple of requests to speak regarding this item. First one being Mr. John Anthony. Mr. Anthony, if you would, come up to the podium. State your name and your address for the record. And after you speak, we'll, some of the council might have some questions for you, as I understand you're the leasee, is that right? Or the leaseor?
Leasee.
Leasee, thank you.
My name is John Anthony. My address is 7900 Monticello Drive, Granberry, Texas. We are the leasee of this property, and we have been since 1965, and the lease on this particular piece of land has not expired till October 2020. Long story short, back in 2001... Long story short, back in two thousand and one, James Anthony, who's my father, under this lease was looking for an opportunity to do something with this piece of land while we had it under lease. At the time, we were not in the city limits of Granbury, we're in the hood county and he decided to put in this modular office space. That, that's what it is. It's about ten thousand square feet of, um, modular office space with intent of leasing it in the future, intent upon expiration of the lease is to vacate the building, move the building off the premises and return the land to its origi, original form. So, we started leasing the building and we had tenants come in from office space, from state representative space, to, uh, land surveyor space, to financial services, guys that are doing it, the pecan store has been in there since day one. And over time, the land surveying guys kept growing and growing and growing and eventually they took up the vast majority of that building with the exception of the pecan store space and one other small bay that's about nine hundred square feet. In two thousand and three, when the city annexed the building and everything, topographics was in there and, uh, con store was in there and hence their continued use of the space and topographics maintained a, a long-term tenancy in that space, which they moved out, I guess, it's been nearly a year ago, maybe a little over a year ago, which has triggered the CO issue. We virtually have a vacant building. Topographics is still there, the con store's still represented there, but we have about eighty-five hundred square feet of vacant space in there that's just sitting there and we lose what's left of topographics. It's virtually a vacant building and sitting in interim holding, we're not able to pull in or attract any new tenants into that building and that building just sits there vacant with no activity for the next eight years. We were asked by the city in two thousand and three or two thousand and four that we need to bring the building up to code with respect to some architectural guidelines, some, um, addition of rock, you know, just exterior, um, work to be done on the building to bring it in compliance with the city regulations that was done at that time. That, it's just kind of where we are. It's a real frustrating situation for both parties and, uh, we, we intend to be there through October twenty twenty. We'd like to be able to utilize that building for, uh, tenant space to draw in some businesses in, into Granbury, whether they be office space or a donut store, you know, but whatever it may be, that would better fit under the light commercial zoning. We're kind of hand-tied by the, our holding. And that's, that's where we stand today. That's where our quest- Our request, to back up, there, there's some talk earlier, uh, about how it all came to rezoning. We, on multiple occasions, had provided written requests to the landowners of the property to, um, ask for their permission or support in rezoning it and were not successful in doing it. And the most recent time, which I believe y'all have copies of communication on that, you can see that it was declined and, and they've got their reasons. And upon that, them declining that, I thought, well, I'm called down to the city and see what options, if any, we may have at this point. And I learned that there was an option that the city could, the city could initiate a rezoning request upon behalf of that property, but upon notifying the landowners and the surrounding neighbors within the, the radius and, and that's how we got here today. That's, that's the case that I'm-
Thank you, sir.
Glad to answer any questions.
Anybody on council have any questions for? Let me make sure I got your name right, Mr. Anthony?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony, I read your letter and the one from Don.
Yeah.
And, uh, is this part of the Leonard deal years ago? Like part of con plantation, that same group?
Yes, I mean, we're, we're part of, our family's part of the con plantation.
Is this trustee, are they part of your family?
No, sir.
They're not?
No, sir.
Okay. But it sounds like me reading the letter, that it's more of a family's wobble than it is a, you know, I don't want to see the city get in the middle of a family's wobble. I have enough at home, but-
It is not a family's wobble.
Okay, but I mean, just reading it and he's talking about, I guess, your dad or granddad from the grave and things like that, I didn't understand the letter.
The rid, the original lease that was put in place in the sixties, nineteen sixty-five, was between a Mr. Estes, who's the landowner, or the trustee, the state is the landowner as then as lessors and us as the leasee.
Okay. If, if this is approved tonight, are you gonna redo the buildings out there or what are you gonna do?
Well, it's not our intent to re, redo the buildings. If, if there's additional requirements that need to be backed to bring it up to city specs, then certainly we'll get on board and, and take care of that business. Then, Ken, um, from our angle is to be able to, to widen the gap of, um, prospects, tenant prospects for the building.
So, you're not planning on putting a fence up around them or anything like that?
We're not planning on fencing the property. We're not planning on putting additional improvements on the property because of the nature of the lease and we're eight years left. It's not financially feasible to go do anything else to that property as, as far as structural improvements.
My question to you, Scott, and the next one is, are the buildings right now, and those are empty, the way I read it, so when they re-lease them, they gotta come under the new code. What's that gonna do to them?
What happens, let's address the masonry first. He basically went before, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy when, after the city annexed it in two thousand and three, went before the Board of Adjustment and there is some stone on the front fascia of, of the modular building. So, he's gone through that process and placed the stone on the building.
I mean, I just don't want to see my hands to get this approved and come back costing hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, and I'm-
But, but the question is, how did that happen? Because you think about it, like the guy, and I'm gonna throw it out here, but the guy with the gun range, he had that building for years and they come back and they're trying to get him to have to do it, approve the occupancy of the stone. So, how's this different?
I guess I'm not following, uh, 'cause the, the Board of Adjustment can only grant variances. I think what the, what the council did was grant the SUP to allow for the gun, gun range and the Board of Adjustment granted the variance, just like Mr. Anthony went to the Board of Adjustment for-
We put it on three years ago.
For, for the stone?
Yep.
Was it a planned development?
No, that was, that was an SUP use of a, a gun range, but it had nothing to do with the masonry requirement.
You answered a question about, how about masonry and we just, we can't let them go for three years, if they make it, then they can do it.
But the masonry aspect of it has to be approved by the ZBA, any kind of an adjustment on the masonry. That goes between the zoning Board of Adjustment, not before the council. That's a legislative, uh, I mean, a judicial kind of a ruling.
I just-
I, I just need to get you back to where we're asking questions right now.
My question is this then, Scott. If you own a building and you sell it or lease it out to somebody else, you don't have to bring it up to code if it's approved by the variance. Does that make sense?
Well, there, there's things that cause compliance, one of which is a certificate of appropriateness or a certificate of occupancy, excuse me. That kicks into masonry. And what we talked about was he's already gone before the Board of Adjustment to do the front fascia for the faux stone. That's no longer an issue. He's gone, he's gone through them.
As long as he's got the lease.
It's tied to the property.
Standard?
It's not the, not the owners, not, not the individuals, it's tied to the property. So, as long as that building is there and that building operates in the light commercial zone, if this is approved, then it's tied to the physical improvements of the property. The other thing that kicks in compliance is when a property's rezoned from interim holding to light commercial is landscaping requirement. So, he will have to comply prior to the issuance of the next certificate of appropriateness for landscaping of that developed area.
And, and if I'm right, he also has to have some hard surface parking area?
That's right.
Uh, exterior lighting is required up to a point or-
On the code, so if he starts filling up his building, we'll accrue a parking schedule to say, you have this type of use and you have this many spaces. We do a physical count of the site for every CO that comes in and out and as long as he has the available hard surface for the occupancy of the space that he has, uh, COs for-
He got enough parking places now for all of it or does that go back to Granbury?
Again, he's got some vacant areas, so he's got, based on the vacancies that he has, he's got parking spaces for the, the operating space that he has for the site. Now, when a new CO request comes in, we'll go back out there and say, well, this adds four or five more spaces. Does he have that available in addition to the one, the space that he's currently using?
It, it'll come back before council at that point.
Yeah, I just didn't want Mr. Anthony to wake up someday and say, he's gotta do this, this, this. Probably a lot of money.
Alright, uh, is that it for you, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Alright, once again, we're trying to address these questions to Mr. Anthony, please.
Yeah, and I don't want to get in, I'm, I want to talk directly to John. John, thank you for being up here and when I read the, the request, the agenda item, and, and I think you stated clearly, your goal is to lease four spaces and, and get some people in there and I get it, so, so I appreciate that. And so, whatever happens up here tonight, I understand that full well. The owner of the property though has, has, has raised a huge opposition and that's my biggest concern. And, and the big, the elephant in the room, and I've, I've said this to staff and I still want to get this done, you, you're occupying that little building, okay, in that area. Let's get something done for you there in that building so you can rent it out to your people, okay? Rent it, have more opportunities to rent it to other things and leave that other alone. And there's gotta be a way to do that.
Yeah.
I cannot vote for this as it sits here tonight, but I, I do want to see you lease those places and there should be a way to do that. What do we have to change? We can't do it tonight.
Well, it, it's my understanding that I can't propose to rezone a portion of that that's not surveyed or platted out and the boundary lines that are drawn up there-
And so, that was my understanding.
That leads you right back-
Is the boundary.
If they're in fact-
And that's what it is. I mean, if, if the city would entertain, put some lines down there and carving out that one acre or an acre and a half in rezoning that light commercial, great. If the city would entertain-
That's why we go back to my question.
If the city would entertain rezoning it-
Yes, yes.
Through October twenty twenty, the light commercial, then move it back to interim holding.
I think there's a way to get this done, John, and I support you and I, and I support the, what y'all are doing here. I just tonight, the way it's brought forward, I, I can't support it, but I, I think we can get this done.
It all falls back to the parent track issue. The parent track issue is how it's laid out. Is that statutory, state regulations? Is that not, that it has to do with-
It's our zoning ordinance requirement that actually says-
Our zoning ordinance.
Pardon me?
It's our zoning ordinance, it's the city's.
It's the city zoning ordinance and many, many times, the zoning ordinance mimics the statutory requirement. I don't know if that language is in there, uh, but I can tell you it's in our adopted zoning ordinance.
And I'm just saying, I'm challenging my colleagues tonight, Scott and John, to get something done so you can get your building leased for the next eight years and this landowner will be, will be okay in all that other property without him having extra taxes and all these other burdens, going against the will of the owner of the property.
Yeah, I mean, if the property, uh, wanted to revert back or be rezoned back to interim holding at that time, that's fine. It's, it's my opinion that the light zoning of the property doesn't negatively affect the value of the property down the road when it comes time to dispose of it by the property owner. There's, there's gotta be a time-
You, you're not able to throw a piece of property from light commercial back into interim holding. You can't do that.
John, do you know if, do you know if the taxes, do you know if, if the other is, uh, the other that you're not occupying, you're occupying the building that little area around there, do you know if that other property-
Let's ask the owner of that question.
Good, okay.
Yes, alright. Any other questions for Mr. Anthony? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Anthony-
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even see you down there.
My reading of the lease, you are responsible for the real estate taxes on that property, is that correct?
Correct, we do pay the property taxes.
Right. And so, the owner of the dirt at this point in time doesn't have any responsibility for property taxes on the property until it reverts to them at the end of the lease.
That's correct.
And to follow that up, am I understanding that you're taking care of the entire parent track?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, I got one question, Stuart. Stuart, can we, Nick and I were just talking, but could we do an SUP on that for eight years? Do the whole thing? And convert it back?
No.
Why couldn't you do an SUP?
Because interim holding doesn't allow for SUPs on a long line.
But if we changed it over?
You'd have to amend the zoning ordinance and you don't have that in front of you. Interim holding district does not allow for SUPs in the zoning ordinance.
But if we changed it over to, uh-
That's not on the agenda though tonight.
But we're trying to find a way to get this done, Mayor, and it may not get done tonight.
Then it could be brought back.
Yes, right.
Okay? We can bring it back. Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Like to visit with Mr. Maynes, please, Don Maynes. Please state your name and your address for the record, please, sir.
My name is, uh, Don Howard Maynes. I reside, that's M-A-I-N-E-S, just like the state of Maine with an S on the end of it. I reside at twenty-eight thirty Southeast Forty-first Place, Ocala, Florida. I have come over here, I've flown over here from Florida to address this issue because I have two concerns regarding this proposed zoning change. As the owner, well, in addition to that, my sister's in the audience, she's an owner with me in our trust. As the owner of this property, I want to preserve the value of the property because I believe that a change in zoning to light commercial is going to adversely affect the value of that property and I'll get into that in a little while. Further, I think it'll greatly decrease the property's desirability for future potential buyers and thus affect the property value, but more importantly, the potential for the future marketability of the property. The second reason why I flew over here to address this is I want to get to the bottom of where this zoning request comes from. Because it doesn't come from me, the property owner, and it doesn't come from my sister, we oppose this change. So, I have the application and I'd like to take a look at it. First off, the application itself has applicant's name and it has my name and my sister's name. We're not the applicants. Then if you go further down, it says the property owner's got my name, it doesn't list my sister down there. And then it says the owner's representative and it's got James Anthony down here. He doesn't represent me. So, this is what was submitted originally. There's no date on it and in addition to that, in, in bold letters here, in the bold line, it says, "I, the undersigned, am the owner, author, or authorized agent of the subject product. I hereby certify that all information provided is true and correct." None of this information is true and correct. None. Now, I know what you're gonna say. The city is making this request. Well, let's talk about that. Based on, on exactly what? Who up there on this council came to this decision on his own? You were approached by somebody for this and you were approached by here because they couldn't get through the front door, so that they have decided to come in the back door and make you complicit in this fraudulent application? You all have raised several of the issues that I wanted to address because you have the same concerns I do. I fail to see why they, why you all have targeted my seven point seven acres for this change. Mr. Allen raised the question about, what about the other property, all down 377? Why don't we do it all at one time? I don't know, why not? But you all are targeting just my property. I object to that. I didn't want to impose myself upon this distinguished council. That's why I've been concerned about the property value, that's why I didn't want to bring it up to you. I've explained to Mr. Anthony through correspondence on a couple of different occasions and you have my letters or at least some of them in front of you, but let me read you the letter that he sent to me, just one sentence from May first, and I quote, "This is in response to his asking me again to change the zoning. Thank you for your reply to our inquiry about a possible zoning change to the Granbury property. Your decision is one we can live with and certainly honor." Let me say that again. Your decision is one we can live with and certainly honor? And then I get a letter from Granbury saying that they've enlisted you to go forward on their, in their place? That doesn't make sense to me. That certainly doesn't sound honorable. With regard to my primary concern, in 2006, Mr. Durant, who owns all the rest of the property there, 480 acres, that was my property. I was forced to sell that to him. After my grandfather died, we found out about something called death tax, in which the federal government wants 55% of your estate. We didn't have that. So as a result, we had to sell the property. So we sold it to Mr. Durant. You all know Mr. Durant. He's well-known for all of his car dealerships. I tried to sell him those nine acres, which included the Tommies. He didn't want it at the time because it was encumbered by this lease, a lease that started in 1965 by my grandfather and Mr. O.P. Leonard. Both of these men died years ago, and they both control this piece of property from the grave. That doesn't seem right, but I have to live with that. Anyway, in 2006, Mr. Durant came back to us and said, you know, I've reconsidered and I would like to buy those nine acres from you. We said, okay, but you understand that it's encumbered by this lease. He said, yes, I will see what I can work out on that. He offered me $2.5 million for that property. I said, it sounds like a fair price to me. Only problem was, he couldn't come to an agreement with Mr. Anthony, so the leasing stood in the way of my even selling the property. About a year later, a German company came to me. They offered me $3.2 million for the property. I said, wow, that's pretty nice, but it's got a lease on it until 2020. So do I think that by changing the interim holding, which is the zoning they were looking at, do I think by changing it to light commercial where you can put, you know, God knows what, tattoo parlors on there or whatever you want, do I think that's going to affect the value of the property? You betcha I do. I would probably take a big hit. I've offered it to Mr. Anthony for the same price, but he won't pay that. Of course not. So will it adversely affect it? Yes, sir, it will. I know the argument that some of you will probably have, that it's going to provide a few more tax dollars, but Mr. Anthony's argument pertains to him being able to lease that 10,000 square foot building covering, you know, maybe one acre. Assuming that the city council accepts his reasoning, what is the need to rezone all 7.7 acres? Why not just that building? You know, why do we have to include all of it, which is what some of you all have addressed this evening, so I won't dwell on it? We, the owners, believe that the city is best served by leaving it one H, or IH, interim holding for now. Leaving it in place because all the adjoining sections around it are one H. This lease, we are now in year number 47 of a 55-year lease. I'm not opposed to Mr. Anthony making money out there. I'm all in favor of the city generating some commerce out there. I'm not opposed to that. But I am left with the change in zoning eight years from now when they vacate the property. If you're really concerned about the long-term reaching effects of the zoning change, in eight years ago, or in eight years from now, that lease is not going to be renewed. And they will vacate, and I will hold out for, hopefully, a buyer that will come along and offer me what I've already been offered, but couldn't because the Anthony stood in my way. I would like to get that. Now, nobody up there is willing to underwrite that or guarantee that that's going to be able to happen. In eight years, probably you all won't even be holding this office. But I will be stuck with whatever decision you all make regarding the zoning change. That's why I'm against it. I'm not against anybody profiting, but I would hate to see that property sit vacant and idle once the Anthony's are gone from it. I would certainly, if this is not agreeable to them, that they can't make the money, I'll let them out of the lease and they can walk today. I've got no problem with that. And I've got no problem with your suggestion, sir, that maybe we can find a way that we can allow them to do something within that building. I don't really have an objection to that. I'm, my sole objection is to, I'm against the zoning change because that's going to affect me adversely on the marketability because fewer people are going to want it. I think Mr. Durant might want to put a car dealership on there. You can't do that in light commercial. Thank you for your time, and I'll have to take any questions.
Anybody on council have any questions?
I would like to thank you for flying to Florida here to represent yourself in this situation. Thank you. Thank you.
Got one question. You said that the city.
This is Mr. Allen, by the way.
Yes, sir.
I'm Tony Allen. Thank you. You say the city sent you an application filled out. That wasn't true?
I got this off of your website. This is what was filed off your website.
The same one in your packet, councilman.
Who filled it out, Mayor?
That's a good question.
Who filled it out, Scott?
It's not signed. It's not dated. How do we know?
They know. They did it.
Basically, that's what we received in my office, so.
Where'd you get it from?
Nobody knows.
I don't know if this was submitted.
Pardon me? Okay.
Can I get you to come over to the microphone for?
I didn't get this in any letter.
Mr. Maines, I need him to take possession of the mic for just a second so we can hear his reply. Thank you.
I thought during our initial written communication to Mr. Maines, an application was sent with that letter to him requesting a signature where everything was laid out, and if they would sign it, fine. If not, then.
So you forwarded the unsigned application to?
I believe so. It was a.
Community development.
Right. But it still requires a landowner's signature. And we sent it there with the letter requesting a signature from him if they would so approve the request to rezone.
All right. Thank you. So I'm going to ask the counselor here. It's my understanding the City of Granbury has the right to change zoning on behalf of the city based upon public welfare? Is that my understanding?
Public health, safety, morals, or welfare.
Public health, safety, morals, or welfare. So that's why it came before us because it was somebody felt like it was on the welfare of the economic development of the city? Is that what I'm understanding here?
That's the finding that P&amp;Z made, yes, sir.
Okay. So P&amp;Z forwarded it to council, and that's why we have it. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Wait just a minute, Mayor. I've got one question. The gentleman said that you wrote him a letter in May 5th, I believe it was? May 1st, saying that it was okay with you, you accepted not getting rezoned? Is that correct?
He's referring to correspondence between the two of you, in which you agreed that you were.
The correspondence was with James Anthony and Mr. Maines. I believe we did the correspondence. I don't know what separate, he said. He said we can live with that decision.
Who, I'm just a little confused.
Yep.
Did you agree that you stand with, that live with that, or was it somebody else? Is he still alive or he passed away?
Not yet.
Okay. That was this year?
Yes.
Is he the leasing owner? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other questions? We'll close the public hearing portion of this. Entertain any kind of a motion that we have.
Yes. I move that we deny the zoning change and ordinance providing for the ordinance change to change the property from interim holding to light commercial.
We have a motion, requires a second.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion regarding this? All in favor of denying the rezoning application for the property located at 5284 Highway 377 East, being an approximate 7.7-acre tract of the Benjamin Green Survey Abstract Number 196 and the Jay Campbell Survey Abstract Number 122? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. It didn't sound.
We'll deny it.
I need to have a show of hands, please. All in favor, raise your hands. That's unanimous. Those opposed? There being none? That motion passes. Thank you. I want to take a short little 10-minute recess. We'll be right back. At this time, we'll reconvene our city council back in session, bringing us down to item number six, consider and approve a contract for election and joint election agreement between City of Granbury, Granbury Independent School District, City of De Cordova, and Hood County Elections Administrator for services in connection with the general election to be held on November 6, 2012. The U.S. Department of Justice actually requires that it's some 60 days for review of submission by the governmental bodies to the Department of Justice for changes affecting the voting for the November 6, 2012. This is one of those hurdles that we have to muddle through. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve a contract for election along with a joint election agreement between City of Granbury, Granbury ISD, City of De Cordova, and Hood County Elections Administrator.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Hewlett, requires a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion regarding this?
What's the price on it, Mayor?
It's the same price as we pay for our May election. Perhaps I can find the number from the city secretary. Do you know approximately what the cost is? And that's an annual cost, whether it was held in May or November? It just winds up being part of the same annual budget? Does that answer your questions, sir?
Sure.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor of approval of the contract along with a joint election agreement? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. That motion carries. On down to item number seven. Consider and approve an agreement between the city and Gaffin Construction Group Incorporated to serve as the design builder for the redesign and renovation of the Granbury Opera House. Now, in January, the city council considered the responses to our request for qualifications for a design build firm to renovate the Opera House. The council awarded the project to Brian Gaffin Architects and requested that the city attorney and city manager negotiate on a contract with Mr. Gaffin's company and bring that back to the council. Council, if you'll notice that in your packet, you were not given any details as to the agreement, but in the ninth hour, maybe even the 11th hour, we've received copy of that construction agreement. In the total sum of what I saw, of $1,495,000, which was a little bit over our budget that we had anticipated initially of 1.2. And because we haven't had a chance to actually review the contract, other than the fact that the two negotiating parties on behalf of the city have seen it, maybe with a little bit more time than us, I'd like to entertain a motion to postpone. But I will entertain any discussion regarding this at this time from anybody on council. Anybody on council want to speak on this?
I just wanted to clarify the final, if the staff has that time in that short period of time, just give us that final numbers. I read through it quickly because it was given to us a little, what hour that, it was 1.4, something, nearly 1.5. But then I saw those other costs. When you put those associated costs in there, do we have a estimate final? 1.6?
I'll tell you what, we actually have some hard copies. We'll hand hard copies out.
I don't want to.
And if you want to go through all that.
No, I don't want to do that.
I personally would like to take this up at a future meeting when we get a chance to take this home and study it.
I just was going to see if there was a number at all, just. Not yet. So it's going to be 1.5 and more?
1.5 plus.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to say that since we didn't get this till last night at 6 o'clock, and I went home and printed it off. To be fair with the taxpayers, I would hate to make a decision on it tonight without reading for about a day or two. But by us postponing this, what's it going to do to the Opera House for its time?
Well, we saw that the tentative scheduled start date for construction was July 9th, but it's going to push us off by a few more weeks because we can't have construction starting without a contract. We can't have a contract without a bonding, a performance and payment bond in place.
We don't have that?
We don't have that as far as I'm aware. Have we seen that? We have not seen that either. So irregardless of what the tentative start date of July 9th was, we need to be serving the best interest of the city and the taxpayers on this one.
Well, and I'm with you. I just, I have a question for the city manager. So you've been on that team from day one, and I see our representatives sitting out there. What are you all looking at now as far as this now? If we get to, you're working on the contract, get it finalized in a couple of weeks. When do you all think's a real start date? Basically, because I know you've had a lot of discussions with Brian. Are we talking two weeks from July the 9th? Would that be a fair?
I would say delay two weeks, since he was going to do the 9th, this is the 3rd.
Okay.
You'd have to go two weeks from that, would be about, I think Brian could answer that too, but I mean, it would be more like the 23rd or something along those lines.
Great, great. So we're talking a couple of weeks?
But, to your answer, we got this thing at about 6 o'clock last night.
Right. No, I understand.
Mayor, I make a motion then, we postpone it to the 17th. That's our next meeting, I believe.
That's true, Mr. Allen. It is the 17th. I had a note that it was the 16th, but you are correct. It is the 17th.
Or quicker if we could.
Well, you made your motion to postpone till July 17th, I believe, was your motion. I need a second on that, please.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Hewlett to postpone. Does anybody want to discuss making some adjustment to that, or?
That's pretty close to two weeks.
That is two weeks.
Will that give everybody time to get their bonds and everything if we can get them by the end?
I believe he said he's got some companies working on the surety aspect of this, so it probably will address that. So we have a motion and a second to postpone this discussion until the July 17th meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay.
No.
Please note for the record, Mr. Parsons is a naysayer. I love saying that.
There's no bond, so how can we get there?
All right. We're going to move on to item number eight. Discuss and approve alternative methods to assist Granbury Theater Company and Andrew Barris to begin producing theatrical shows during the interim period while the Opera House is under construction, which we just heard maybe a while. These alternatives may include extending the contract service agreement with Andrew Barris and/or entering into a temporary agreement with Granbury Theater Company. Additional alternative discussions would include identifying other locations available for show production and discussing funding for temporary production costs. Now, through this whole process, we've talked about spending money to redevelop the Opera House and how integral it is to our citizens and our tourism. And now we're talking about spending some additional funding. In years past, the city has contributed some $40,000 annually to theatrical companies to put on production. So now we're talking to a company that said when they first got started that they want to be on their own, but they can't be on their own without a theater. So once again, they're caught in a little catch-22 scenario, and it might be on best interest of the city to move forward. interest of the city to move forward with some sort of an agreement extension with Mr. Barris and the Granbury Theater Company, which I noticed we don't have an amended contract services agreement in our packet. And I wanted to ask the counselor regarding that. Is there a tentative, because it states here we have amended contract services agreement? I was just curious, was there something in the works that we didn't see?
I didn't put this agenda item together, so I can't...
Let me speak to that, Mayor, if you don't mind. Because I put the...
You put this on the agenda?
I put this agenda on the, I put this...
This item on the agenda?
On the agenda, thank you.
All right.
And the reason I did so is because we have Andrew Barris coming up, and his contract runs out. And I've made it very clear throughout his first stepping foot in the city of Granbury that we need him to continue selling this vision. Since we've got him on board, not only is he sold the vision, but he has in fact worked with Brian and others at the Opera House to make sure that we have a product going forward when it is complete. And I know that we're delayed, but it will be there. We're going to have a little pain in between, but we're going to have a finished product. It's going to be awesome. The fact is, this agenda item that I called for will give us some latitude. At the same time now, here we find ourselves that we're not going to be in there till March, and that's what we're shooting for. So he's formed a board, Granbury Theater Company, and they've put on a show at the conference center. We see a show that they're doing right now at the courthouse. And if any of you have not seen that, you need to see it because it's fabulous. The fact is, I put this on the agenda, colleagues, because I asked the staff to let us know what we can do financially. Let us look at this contract, because I definitely want to see Andrew stay. So I'll just tell you right up front, we need to extend that. But I've asked the city manager as well, in anticipation of this actual agenda item, what can we do for the Granbury Theater Company? What can we do to help production to get this thing going forward? And it was my understanding, maybe somebody from Granbury Theater Company might have had an idea, because I've talked to a couple of those folks over the last several, two weeks. But I understand staff has some recommendations too. So I want to ask staff first, did you all put some numbers and look at that?
Yes. Yes, what we're recommending really, Andrew Barris has been a tremendous asset to the committee in designing the Opera House and really helping us with a lot of issues of continuing to progress on this thing. So it's the staff, it's my recommendation, the staff's recommendation that we renew his contract or revise his contract for another eight months, which would carry it through the 240 days that Brian has said it's going to take to complete the construction. As well, there was some hope that maybe we could also do some temporary production expenses reimbursement. We are spending a lot of money on facilities, and we really don't want to spend any more money on facilities. But what we would do is have him submit invoices for non-facility-related expenditures to help the company support, I mean, to support them, and reimburse things like actor salaries, licensing fees, maybe even utilities that they're using to produce the show. Those kind of things that would add up to what, and have a limit of whatever the council wants on top of the, I think it's $28,800 for eight months of the extension of the contract.
So what's the extension cost?
$28,800.
$28,800. And then, how much money do you have set aside for the production assistance?
Well, I'm open to any number. I mean, if you took it up to $40,000, which we used to supply to the previous operating company, that's $40,000. That'd be another $11,200. Was... Make it higher or lower, I just think.
When you're saying $40,000, I thought we paid 40 or 60,000 total, including our tax bill and everything.
Well, no, I'm talking about the one before Mike Skiles. He used to write a check. That was support in terms of utilities and expenses and housekeeping and all that.
How much was Mike Skiles?
Uh, Mike Skiles, I'm sorry. Mike Skiles, it varied, but it was around, we were supporting 40, $50,000.
That was tax bill and everything, right?
Yeah, and I have to go back from that, but it seemed to me around that. But we used to write a check to the other production company that was the individuals from New York that came into town. And there was no, you know, restriction on that.
Okay. But if we're paying Andrew, how much per month?
$3,600.
So how much is that per year?
Per year, yeah, it's...
It was $28,800 for the period of eight months.
I have no problem with giving that for now to March, no problem. But what I'm getting at is if we're spending right at $40,000 on him a year, because he'll be here a year in January, so if you take the 40 off the 60, you don't have about 20. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Well, yeah, I was even, oh, 40 off the...
Well, if you take it...
I was saying the $28,800.
It would leave 11,200.
Yeah, I was not counting the original.
You're talking about the next eight months?
Next eight months.
So we'd have 11.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Definitely.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I was talking about the eight months, the eight months, and then whatever you wanted.
Just one at a time. 11,200.
11,200.
And Mayor, at the same time, I told you that, for putting this on, I understood that the Granbury Theater Company had some kind of plan in place, and I encouraged them to talk to the city manager, maybe they didn't have time, or maybe they did. Do you know of an alternate plan as well? Andrew, is anybody prepared to speak into that area? Okay, all right. Because I think it's very imperative for the whole council to hear the complete story before we make our decision.
Well, with that being said, I'd like to remind the council that we do not have an agreement, a show producer's agreement with Granbury Theater Company at this time. Last it was presented, it was going to be taken back to the board of directors. With that question coming to mind, I'd like to call you up to the podium, Mr. Barris.
Mayor, I believe the counselor reviewed the agenda items, so we would have some latitude to do what we want to do.
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And, Mr. Barris, my question refers to that production agreement that we talked about during council previously, and it was going to be carried forward to your board of directors, I believe. Can you give us a status update as to where that is in the mix, please?
Sure. Yeah, we've taken a look at it, and as the board body, we've certainly looked at some of the issues that have been brought to light, and we like some of them and don't like some of them. You know, obviously, as the Opera House continues to be delayed as we go forward, you know, I think it's in our best interests to get contracts going. Right now, obviously, the contract for me is out, and we have no show producer agreement. For all intents and purposes, we have no agreements at all, right? I think that's dangerous for both parties. I think there's a lot of momentum, right, that's been going forward from the theater company's standpoint, given some extraordinarily difficult circumstances, recognizing that it was all of our intention to be into the Opera House in June. As we go forward now, that's going to be 10 months delayed, if not more. We are happy, right? It was our intention as well to make sure that we could do shows in different locations to try to fill the gaps, right? Our first intention, as we all sat here for the first night together, was June, and that's why we made a contract together for seven months. That was the end of June, which is now, and that's why we're out of contract. And then when we go forward, we found out that it was going to be September, then November, then December, then February, now March, and it continues to go in the wrong direction. These are extraordinarily difficult circumstances because obviously, we sell products, like any other business, and without a place to sell our product, we can't survive. We're hesitant and tentative at this point. We feel like we've done every single thing that's been asked of us to make sure that we keep our agreement. We were asked to provide a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, which we have done. We incorporated the organization. We created a board of directors. We have garnered support in the community. We've been producing shows at this point at the conference center, our first production, which was a launch party, with the intention again of opening in September at that point. We've also done shows inside the courthouse to this point, and, you know, our tune has always been that we want volume and consistency and low ticket prices. We've been able to provide none of those at this point, yet we will have sold out 97% of capacity for this production inside of the courthouse, which is a remote location, which is twice the ticket price that we want to be selling them at. And I never anticipated that kind of success. My estimates were very low and conservative going into this, but to be 97%, I can tell you this, based on, our model is based on what they're doing over the Plaza Theater in Cleburne, it's taken them five and a half years to get to 97% of the same seat capacity. So clearly, we're overcoming obstacles and challenges that have been put in our way, and we're very happy with that, right? And I think it's in the best interest of all parties involved to make sure that we do get solid contracts going forward. Now, we see this opportunity at this point. It's, we're at the precipice, right? And I think the parabola can go both ways right now. We can decide to stay, right? We have no contracts at this point, so and if we did, we of course would honor those. But we can decide to stay and go forward in a new facility, which I think would be fantastic inasmuch as we have over 185 season ticket holders, which of course, we want to honor shows for them. We need to do those shows in a location that is consistent. I feel very strongly about location, location, location being the most important part of business, and I feel very frightened when we go into remote locations that we don't know things about. And for instance, when we've done this show in the courthouse, you know, we were given two days to do an install for the show. And you know what? We turned out okay, but on the opening night, we were not prepared to open that show, and that's not a level of quality and professionalism and consistency that any of us want to see. That's what you get when you start doing remote locations. You don't know the space, and it's more difficult to survive in something like that. So we need something consistent, right? We want something that provides volume. We want seats that can be sold on a regular basis, on a weekly basis. We want to produce over that eight-month, and we really feel like it's going to be 10 months. I'll just throw that in. We feel over a 10-month period of time that we would like to produce 10 productions, which would be Thursday, Friday, Saturday matinee, Saturday evening, every single weekend until we get into the Opera House. As we've seen with the 97% capacity, we don't feel like we're going to see tremendous drop back from that inasmuch as the numbers that we've run, and we've looked at all of the demographics and metrics on this system, have been fairly spectacular, right? We've looked at, from Granbury proper, we are looking at 28% of the clientele base coming from Granbury, which we're very happy with. From the outside regions, not including De Cordova and Pecan Plantation, we're looking at 31%. These are people that are coming from Sulphur Springs and Plano and Garland, Blooming Grove, Fort Worth, Dallas has been a big seller, Arlington, Carrollton, San Angelo, Denton, Abilene, Corpus Christi, we had a group from Tumwater, Washington, Round Rock, Hillsborough, Amarillo, et cetera, et cetera. Clearly, this was the whole goal from the very beginning, to produce tourism. As we know, the entertainment industry is a driving force behind tourism, and we feel like we've been supporting that. The thing that's been very interesting and surprising to me has been that our greatest sellers to this point have been Pecan Plantation and De Cordova combined, which is 41%. I never anticipated that. I thought that would probably be Granbury, and then De Cordova would be lower, and Pecan Plantation. But for whatever reason, that's starting to work, and that's what we all want as well. So, you know, when we've looked at it, we've seen that the metrics are obviously in our favor at this point. We're not going to maintain a 97% clip. That's fairly unheard of. But if we get into a new facility that's consistent, that we can start to work our model with volume and lower ticket prices, we feel like we can approach that, and that starts to drive the economy on the square, back into the 1890 grill and the Brazos Smokehouse and et cetera, et cetera, down the line. As we're starting to see after shows at this point, those are filling up, so those folks that are staying open later. So our request from the city is, number one, let's get this contract signed for my contract. I feel like we're in the 11th hour when it comes down to it, and when we get down into the install, it's going to be two months of 80 hours a week to make sure everything's installed properly for whatever our grand opening date's going to be. And if we leave ourselves in a situation that we don't have somebody specifically orientated to all the technical elements, I think that that would be a large, large mistake, and we're going to run into issues for the opening. So I would say that's number one on the agenda. Number two, and I recognize the dollar figures that have been talked about from Mr. McKeefen. When we first started out, there was $60,000 and $40,000 that was talked about for the past organizations, monies that they have received for some of their producing costs. I'm not quite sure that it's a wise idea to incorporate the money that's going into the consulting fees specifically for the Opera House, which is an outside event, into that money that's going into producing a show. They're two totally separate entities. So when we're looking at the overall dollar figure that Mr. McKeefen had mentioned, we want to utilize those funds to start doing shows. We have, you know, sufficient money in the coffers at this point to produce the next show, and if we sell tickets the same way that we've done at this point, we'll produce the next show, and the next show, and the next show. But it's a challenge to do it in a facility that we were told we were going to be in, right? And we formed this company based on that, and we are not in that at this point. So we, we'll ask for a bold ask, is what we'll do. We really feel like it's necessary, and I understand from your standpoint, from the city council's standpoint, that any facility that we go into at this point potentially could look like the city council and the monies that are going to be used for that are going to improve or enhance somebody else's facility. And from a political standpoint, I recognize that's not a wise choice. So where we were looking originally at potentially that could be something that could be offset from the city's funding, we can look at other things. For instance, on this particular production, we produced it with the licensing for Music Theater International for $4,500. $4,500 can be paid to that. We could cover the rent costs of whatever facility we will be going into. There are costume fees, there are property fees, there are set fees. There are all sorts of fees that we could say, okay, these are reimbursable fees, if that's the way that we would like to handle it, outside of any facility's fees, because I recognize that that may not be the wisest political choice. So we feel like, as these are two separate entities, let's eliminate that 20, I'm sorry, whatever that figure was, $3,600 over eight months period of time from that equation, and look at it differently. I think we should look at the total sum amount of money that's available that's been given in the past to the organizations and allow that to come to the Granbury Theater Company's nonprofit organization, so we can start producing shows, start getting direct and indirect income into Granbury like we've seen in the past.
Mr. Barris, my first question pops up in my head as you're talking, and you're talking about having the Opera House not ready for your occupation and putting on a show. You knew going into this that we would not be even talking about shows being produced within the Opera House until December. Is that correct, or am I wrong about that?
No, that's not correct at all. The conversation, the reason we'd made a seven-month contract from the independent contractor standpoint for me was because June was our date to open, right? And that's, we had a deadline, I was going to go back to work, and we said we got to nail this down for seven months, that's when we'll get back into the Opera House. So originally was June, and then it walked to September, then it walked to November, then to December, and now it's walked, based on tonight's conversations, to March. So no, that's not true.
Mayor, may I speak just to that one issue, please?
Sure.
That, and I know minutes could prove this out, but I believe that the council was in session in October of 2011, and we saw out there June or July or something. And that's why that contract was made. In fact, we started November, we said, no, let's don't pay him till December. So his contract started in December, and it ends, I believe, either July 31st...
That's June 30th.
Or June the 30th. So I would agree.
And that was the Andrew Barris, what I call the Andrew Barris independent contractor agreement.
Yes, I agree. That was a contract we made with Andrew for the purpose of creating the vision, selling tickets, keeping it alive until we opened. In October of 2011, I mean, it looked like, hey, maybe that was a real possibility, June or July. So I'm just asking my colleagues to please consider that, because everything that Mr. Barris has said, I believe is very true and very correct. Please carry on, I just want to make sure, because we were in a meeting in October, and that's when we made the decision. If it wasn't October, it was the first meeting in November, but I think it was October because we were questioning, were we going to pay you November the 1st, or were we going to pay you? And it might have been September.
It was October. In fact, I know that because we formed, it took the three weeks to form the company. We formed the company on November 22nd.
Mr. Allen, you have a question?
Yes, sir. I don't have a problem wanting to extend your contract.
We're talking about the independent contractor agreement.
The independent, what we're paying. I have no problem with that.
What we're paying, I have no problem with that. I got about five questions, but I'm kinda getting a breath here. If we don't start funding money for you, you're gonna leave. Is that true or false?
Well, I think that we need to make wise choices going forward, there's no doubt about that, right? If we don't have a facility to do shows in, there's no business that can survive.
I understand. Now, the other day, whenever I got invited to the meeting over there, one of your board members said, y'all invested $10,000 and made $40,000. Nothing said it wasn't none of our business. And it may not be, but we're making a decision here for the taxpayers of this whole city. Now, I was showed a piece of paper that Cleveland's gave you $70,000. Is that right or wrong?
Well, you know, absolutely. And this is a fundraising campaign that we have done at this point, is contingent upon three principles. One is that we would get the contract signed with the city, which is still pending at this point. The other is that the 501(c)(3) status would be secured, which has occurred.
You've done it.
And the third one is that the city hands over the facility for opening of a show. So, we cannot complete that third part of the contingency plan until we get to March at this point. And it's not only $70,000 from that group, it's to the tune of $150,000 from the community. So, we look to that point, right, to have funding that's available, but we can't do it. And every day that it continues walking away from us, the opening of the facility, that money is further away.
Well, you heard at the last meeting, you were the cause of the delay, the cause of fly rails. Is that true or false?
That's not true at all.
Okay, I'm just saying what I was told, or the council was told. Other thing is, Andrew, that I had a couple people come in the restaurant over the weekend, talk to me, and asked me about why you're not out hitting like the Qantas or the Chamber and promoting this that way, you know?
Mr. Allen, with all due respect, I hit every single one of those. I've spoken both to the Qantas and to the Chamber. Probably the reason we've seen Complantation be so strong, is I met with the, I think it was called the Complantation Breakfast Club, where my daughter sang. I go to everyone. I think I've been to almost everyone. Yeah, I wouldn't miss that opportunity. I think that's probably why we're getting a lot of support. I certainly don't hide myself.
Okay. And the last deal was, or two deals, you said that whenever you talked to us back in September, November, where it was, excuse me, you were gonna produce shows for $15 to $20 tickets?
15 was exactly what it was.
15, okay.
Yep.
And my concern is, and I know you got an answer for it, it's probably a good one, but you're saying it's costing more now because you don't have the facility?
That's exactly right. The consistency of a facility obviously is going to reduce costs, the overhead, right? There are outside concerns. In fact, here, to get specific about that, going into the conference, going into the courthouse, we had to line every single window with felt, right? We had to adjust all of their acoustic issues, which were substantial. These are problems, right? And once you're into a facility, you don't have those unknowns. It's like any other business.
Right. The other question is, is when we first hired you, we were talking about maybe doing one or two shows before it got open, different places. And I know it's been four months, eight months, now 12 months, whatever it is. So, is it feasible for y'all to say, have a show every three months until we got open? Would that work for you? If we could block out, say, the convention center and give it to you, you think that'd be enough to keep people happy until we got open?
I think it would be a struggle, Mr. Allen, honestly. I think that, you know, I think what we're seeing at this point is so much tremendous growth. People absolutely need this to happen here at this point. I think if we do it on a three-month basis, we're missing a wonderful opportunity.
The other question is, is, as you just heard, it went from 1.2 to 1.5. That didn't include a lot of stuff. So, you know, I don't know what we can do until we help you a whole lot, until we get into our budget cycle next week. I mean, I don't know if we got an answer that we could do it though.
And let me bring this into a little bit different perspective. As I was referring to, we've got an Independent Contractor Agreement with you, Andrew, as a consultant for the project at the Opera House. That's separate from what we're talking about in supporting Granberry Theater Company. And it needs to remain separate.
Not necessarily, the way the agenda was worded. I mean, I disagree with that.
I'm just trying to lay it out, that when we twist this all up into one big comprehensive bundle, Andrew Barris is our consulting person, theatrical consultant for the project for the Opera House construction.
Do you agree that he's selling the vision? I mean, he...
Oh, I have no problem with that. That's part of what it says. I'm not saying that we can't address both of these issues. I'm saying that we need to be addressing them separately, is what I'm trying to get everybody on board. And so, with that in mind, I would first like to entertain a motion to extend the Granberry Independent Contractor Agreement through to a period of, I believe it was February 28.
Mayor, with all due respect, I've still got some more questions for Mr. Barris before we even think about making a motion. Because you're trying to get right to the contract.
I'm trying to get to this portion of the contract, not the Granberry Theater Company aspect.
There's one agenda. Would you give us a little latitude, since Tony was able to ask a lot of questions of Andrew's, that I wanted to clarify, so we could actually make a good decision? Because I don't know if I'd wanna second anything or not, or maybe my colleagues, but...
Well, it's not always for you to second anything. There could be other thoughts on this panel.
There's four councilmen here.
That's right.
And I'm saying that it's gonna take half of us to get this motion done. One to make a motion, and one to second.
I understand, but I want to break this into two parts.
I'm saying, please don't do that. I don't think it's needed. We might be able to do one thing.
Entertain a motion at this time to break this into two separate parts, to consider a separate agreement for the Granberry Independent Contractor Agreement, and a separate agreement for the Granberry Theater Company.
The only thing I got against...
Requires a motion.
Only thing I got against that is, Andrew might not stay if we don't fund the other money.
And that's for you to consider.
Can we go into executive session on this?
No, because...
Mayor, I have some questions for Mr. Barris.
It's an open discussion.
I didn't hear anybody making a motion.
I didn't hear anybody.
We're allowing you to continue.
Sure. I'm just trying to move us along, Councilman.
I hear you. Andrew, tell me about what you said. You said something a while ago, I wanna make sure I heard it correct. Because the mayor's correct, we have a contract with you, and obviously, we want you to stay. Obviously, I want you to stay, and it sounds like the mayor does too. It sounds like Mr. Allen has even voiced that support. But you said something about the money being separated. Are you saying that you would not wanna have a contract specific for you, or you want one for you, and then you wanna go into monies for production or whatever? Would you like to see your contract with other monies coming out of the second phase, or would you like to see it all together? I just need some clarification.
I think both of those could actually work, to be honest with you. To me, it's semantics. I mean, we could call it one, or call it the other, it makes no difference. I do think they're two separate entities, right? I think that one contract is specific to the construction of the facility, and the other one is specific to producing shows.
I know.
But if you wanted to put them all together with that language in there, certainly that's your prerogative.
The thing is, I still refer back to the fact that we already have an existing agreement that could easily be extended with a motion.
Mayor, I see what you're saying, and I see what you're trying to get to, and I agree, because the one thing I wanna check off here is, I want a contract with Andrew. And we need to get a signed contract with Andrew Barris. And that's what we're trying to do right now, is just get a signed contract with him. And I'll make a motion that we get a signed contract with him.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Now, we've gotta define the terms. The terms are through to the end of February 2013. Are you okay with that being added to your motion? And are you okay with the second on that? And it will be for the same amount of money, $3,600 per month. I need to make sure you understand that. Are you okay with that, Councilman?
I'm okay with that, Mayor.
All right. See, I was gonna fill in all these blanks, if you had have let me. And I need to make sure, Councilman Tyra, that you're okay with the $3,600 per month for that term of the contract.
The only reason I clarified it, because I didn't hear him say one or separate, so thank you, Mayor.
I'm okay. I'm fine. I'm moving on, I'm getting that part sliced off the pie. So, with that being said, any more discussion regarding the City of Granberry Independent Contractor Agreement with Andrew Barris?
I'm not opposed to extending Andrew's contract in that particular instance, but are you getting the cart before the horse? If you're not gonna have production, why keep him here?
Well, because we have a project.
Why spend this other $3,600 bucks if you're not gonna keep him here as part of a production company?
Be up to him, I guess.
But you understand what the Independent Contractor Agreement is for? It's to help with consulting during the construction phase. And we haven't even got to the construction phase.
Mayor, may I add to what Mr. Parsons said down there? You know, we needed a contract before, and we rugged this thing on just because of technicalities, and we just kept dragging it on, dragging on. The guy's working without a contract, am I right? I mean, you know, we should have had...
One day.
No, no. He don't have a signed contract now.
When did it die?
End of last month. Yeah, I'm out.
June the 30th.
Three days ago.
But we need one now.
I agree.
And Mayor, since there's a motion to second, and there's been some debate, I just wanted to tell Mr. Parsons that he voted in support of this back in October, because we all believe and agree that we support the Opera House, and that Andrew is in fact the face of the Opera House right now, so we definitely need to do this.
I think what Mickey's concerned is, mine too, if anything else is not given to him, then you're gonna leave.
We're talking about his contract now, we're not talking about any other money. This is about keeping him here to the city.
I'm like, how am I Mickey? Do we, you know, okay, if, Derek, you're gonna write the contract up, right?
Yes, sir.
It'd have a clause in there, if he leaves, it stops right then, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Will you support it, Mr.?
I will now.
It's called a termination section.
Can we call it a question?
And it's a 30-day notice by either party, is what it currently reads.
Mayor, if I might just add something into there, maybe to allay your fears, Mr. Allen. I have no intentions of leaving, right? I think it's a wonderful opportunity here, I think we have so much going for us. I think we need to make wise choices, like I said, but, you know, I'm not standing here holding anybody ransom at this point. You know, let's get this part of the contract done, we'll continue conversing about the next part of it, and we'll go forward, yeah?
All right. So, at this time, we have a motion and a second to... To extend a City of Granberry Independent Contractor Agreement with Andrew Barris until February 29th, 28th of 2013, at $3,600 per month, and authorize the mayor to sign, so it doesn't have to come back to council. Are you okay with that? I've gotta make sure you're okay.
I'm okay with it.
All right. And you're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, with that being said, any further discussion on this portion of this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Now, let's go on to the Granberry Theater Company aspect of this, which is where we need to develop some sort of a producer agreement to help support the theater, okay? So, with that being said, we've heard from him that he's needing some help with a venue location. Can you give me more enlightenment as to what you're referring to, venue location? I guess you've tentatively found one, is that...
Well, tentatively, I mean, we have looked high and low, to be honest with you.
Because I was thinking G.I.S.D. Auditorium is a venue, but...
Well, but that's not, I mean, we've looked at everything, to be honest with you. We've got a solid board of directors, and a lot of talented skilled people inside of that body, and we've, people have looked, right? And we've been looking, I've spoken to a lot of people, and we know that this is the critical criteria to succeed at this point, is to find the right location. And like I'd said before, I think that it needs to be consistent, so I don't wanna bounce around from location to location. I think it needs to be, this is where we're gonna be for the next eight to 10 months period of time, and then we're going to be in the Opera House. Because the first time you confuse somebody, they have too much going on, there are too many opportunities, they'll go do something else, right? We lucked out on this one, that we're in the courthouse, it's the right time for this kind of a show, we had some good press and stuff like that, especially through the Chamber, but, you know, this is lightning in a bottle. These things don't happen all the time, so you've gotta be very consistent. And secondly, I feel it's our responsibility to be on the square. I feel like, you know, we've looked at warehouses and different locations, and we've looked at everything, but I think the square is, you know, the heart and soul of this community. I think it's its cultural backbone, and I think it's our responsibility as the people that are gonna be inside the Opera House, to be as close as humanly possible to that Opera House. So, it's an easy transition. So, it's not that somebody's out on 144 blah de blah, it's that, okay, they're right here, and they're gonna be right next door, eight months down the road. I feel like that's the closest thing we can do to making this right at this point. So, yes, without going into specific terms about location, because I don't think it's, you know, something that the body politic here really wants to have details on, because we'll, if it comes down to, you know, getting some assistance from the production side of things, we would absolutely ask for that. When it comes down to paying rent and getting facility up to speed, we will take care of that.
Mayor, what number are you talking about here?
Well, we've heard that in the past, that the City of Granberry has offered some 40K to help defray the costs of a production company for a year. That's for a production year, that's for our fiscal year. We've got a fiscal year coming up with a new budget starting in October. And I'd like to turn to the city manager and ask, is a 40K hit to the budget out of the question?
No.
Okay. We see tourism is on the increase, we see that by heads and beds, and so, my suggestion is that as we move forward with this, that we put into monthly payments that qualify. Now, I gotta make everybody understand that you can't just give money away, it's gotta serve a public purpose, all right? You can't just throw money out there to anybody willy-nilly. It's gotta serve a public purpose. And I consider fine arts and cultural experiences benefiting our citizenry, a public purpose that benefits us. It's a cultural enhancement for the city.
Well, where I'm confused is, I like what you're saying, but I'm confused at what the city manager said, because he talked about production costs, and you're going further. Is there gonna be any accountability or tags on this, or I just wanna clarify what you want?
It's not what I want, it's what we need.
Mayor, if I may?
So, yes.
Well, he asked me about it in the mouth. What I'd like to see is that, for Andrew, and I mean, I hear what he's saying here, and I've listened to a lot of the things he's said about getting, you know, getting his people out here in the community that knows what he's all about, and what he's got to offer, but we're not done yet. There's a lot of people that don't know about Andrew Barris, don't know about what's coming on, they don't know about it, believe it or not. There's a lot of people out there. And with him putting on these little mini-shows and such as this, and letting people get aware of this, and also, are we continuing to sell season tickets?
We are.
Because I didn't hear anything about that at the courthouse thing.
Well, you know, and to speak to that just a tiny bit, we sold six season tickets yesterday.
Yeah.
It's not been an active campaign at this point, because it's been so up in the air as to what we're doing, I've been hesitant.
But I see this as an opportunity, at least going into three or four months, is doing some mini-shows to where we can decide where we wanna place you at. And with, you know, with doing that, you know, we're, as the city manager stated, we're going into a budget review in a couple of weeks, where we can put all these, and I would like to see Andrew putting together something for us, that shows us what he has in mind, maybe different places, maybe some comparisons, what he has in mind, dollar-wise, and building-wise, all this good stuff, and what's gonna come out of that, so that we can enter that into our budget review, and make a good decision on what we wanna do. I mean, because we're going in that in a couple of weeks, and I don't think that's gonna make or break Andrew right now, to be able to put us something together that we can review with the budget review, and put that on one of our items right there, to make sure that we have that money available.
I think sooner, the sooner we can get to it, the better.
I mean, that's in two weeks.
As the summer season continues to go on, it'll take us a month realistically to produce a show. So, if we start it right now, we're in the middle of August, going into a new location.
And Andrew, one question. I heard this. I'm not the expert on this, but when you put on a production show, can you put on a part of that show, or are you licensed where you got to put on the whole show?
You're required to do the show as written.
Okay. So, if you was to do a mini-show, you would find or whatever?
Yeah, they would, you know, it's not something you want to mess with. They're difficult companies in the first place to work with, and if you breach your contract with them, they'll, they'll no longer work with you.
You pretty much got to pay the whole dollar amount to put a production on them.
It's as scripted.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion that we reimburse the Granbury Theater Company to the extent of their production cost not to exceed forty-five hundred dollars per show for the next ten shows.
Just write that.
Can we get some clarification on the motion, Mayor?
Hang on just a second. I'm still trying to type it all out. You said forty-five hundred per production. Is that correct, sir? And for what period, sir?
Ten shows. That was, that was the cost of seventeen seventy-six, right? His contract's going to be for ten shows.
Yep, that was a full production show.
Hang on just a second, because I, we'll get to discussion once I, once I get the motion down, gentlemen. All right? Because once I get the motion, I'm going to read the motion, and then we're going to go into requesting a second. This is what I have, is there's been a motion that we, the City of Granbury reimbursed the Granbury Theater Company for production costs not to exceed forty-five hundred dollars per production for a total of ten shows. And said donation shall show to serve a municipal or public purpose of enhancing the cultural arts within the City of Granbury. Are you okay with that addition? I mean, you have to show a public purpose.
Are your shows that good? Could you read that again?
We get by.
You sure they enhance the art? I mean, Tony's in this one right now. You sure that enhances the city? I'm fine with that language.
I'm trying, I'm trying my head, get my head to spin around the language just a second.
Mayor, Mayor.
Yes. Please spit it out for me.
I think that it can be clarified, the city has to find that the donation serves a municipal purpose. Mickey, would you agree that a donation to the Granbury Theater Company would serve the municipal purpose of enhancement of the cultural arts promotion of-
Yeah.
All right. With that being said, entertain a second that the City of Granbury reimbursed the Granbury Theater Company for the production costs not to exceed forty-five hundred dollars per production for the next ten shows. Need a second, please. Anybody? Nobody? That's going to die for a lack of seconds, sir, even after I typed in all that stuff.
That's what I tried to tell you, Mayor.
All right. So, let's continue on. Can we get anywhere with a motion regarding the Granbury Theater Company at this point? I think we understand the need. Councilman Tyra?
Yeah, because again, I've talked to a few of these folks and appreciate some things they've shared with me. And what I understood is that, and you made this very clear through your continuing consistency, consistency and consistency. That means one location. Okay, we got it. We're with you on that. Will that forty-five hundred dollars per show, will it do what you want to do? I mean, the fact is that, you know, there's been some questions about where you're going to do this at, so we need to give the public full disclosure on this, okay? And so, what is the location of the actual consistent location that you keep talking about here?
We've looked at the open-air pavilion at the Granbury Square Plaza as our best opportunity.
And would that forty-five hundred dollars per production satisfy the installation, you know, whatever you get worked out?
It would not. We have some substantial numbers that we're going to see when it comes down to, if you go by there, right, there are some issues. There are some noise issues. There are going to be big trucks that are passing by that we're going to have to put up acoustic barriers on both sides. It used to be an enclosed facility in the first place. We'll enclose it again. The side that's got the big A-frame on the east side will need to be enclosed as well. Obviously, there are some air conditioning and heating issues we'll be dealing with. So, there are some big ticket items that we'll be dealing with. So, ultimately, you know, it's going to be tight to get, you know, risers in there and get it up to speed. We'll have to extend the stage. It's too small as well. So, there are some things in there to make it right. It's not perfect.
I've got to put some brakes on here for just a second and defer to Scott, who's in community development, because it sounds to me like any kind of a change to the exterior of the open venue is going to require jumping another hurdle, which is P and Z.
The Historic Commission.
Historic Commission?
So, any material change, that little pavilion area is actually in the historic overlay, any material change to the building or structure will require-
Even if it's temporary?
Even if it's temporary.
And the council has overridden those-
There's an appeals process, but they still have to take the first bite of the apple at the Historic Commission. Thank you.
We understand that part of the process, Mayor.
I want to get back to the money, Andrew. And when you talk about the cost, and I, are you talking about, would that trigger if the council made a motion and approved a dollar figure that would support that effort? Would that trigger the other money that you have out there? I think Mr. Allen talked about some Cleveland money that was donated. Would that money, would the Granbury Theater Company be able to spend some of their own money and partner with the city in this situation?
As per the current contract, no. You know, when it comes down to it, those folks from the outside are very, very interested in making sure that the Opera House is completed properly, to spec, on time, et cetera. And so, you know, that would not trigger that at all. That would be great, but I don't believe that's going to happen.
Yeah, because that money is going to go toward the Opera House when it's open and all that.
That money, you know, and I believe in what they're doing, right? We specifically went to them and did some fundraising with them, because, you know, the Opera House is going to require some stuff, even when it's finished at that point. Will require some additional things inside there to get that thing up to the ability that we all want.
Well, I'm asking the question one more time. I've asked it twice. Will the forty-five hundred dollars, you heard a motion come out. It didn't get a second, but would that forty-five hundred dollars per month, would that get you and your company where you want to go?
No, I believe sixty-five hundred dollars per month is the dollar figure that makes sense to us.
Mayor, I move that we approve sixty-five hundred dollars a month with, with some requirements to this. And because now that I'm putting this picture together, I actually think there's a win-win here for everybody. So, I'd just like everybody to pay attention, and attorney, if you're ready to start writing, so we may have to. But I think there's a win-win for everybody, because we need the Granbury Theater Company here, okay? Colleagues, we need them here, okay? The facility they're talking about is right there in the plaza, okay? That's, somebody help me. Is it Granbury Square Partners LLC? Is that the company? Is that the company again? Okay. So, my motion is that we approve the sixty-five hundred dollars per month with the term being that the Granbury Square Partners, because I understand that you're going to have to enter into a lease with them, that they in fact, this year is the win, because this year they have opportunity to buy back the parking lot that we paid a million dollars for at four percent. So, I'm putting that as part of the trigger in this. So, yes, I'm putting that as part of the trigger. I want an opportunity to get the parking lot back. This would be a great opportunity. Everybody wins.
Every taxpayer's town.
That's my motion.
Second. Second it.
You can't throw that part into this. That's like, that's like taking apples and oranges and putting them together. You can't do that. I'm sorry, Councilman. We can't, we cannot put a stipulation that Granbury Square Partners LLC has to purchase back the parking lot.
They're going into a lease with them. I'm saying this, we got to get this people in a location.
You can't put that on this table today. No. It's not going to happen.
Mayor, can we make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We table it after budget.
I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and we request Andrew Barris-
Hang on just a second. Hang on just a second. We have a motion on the floor. I need to find out if it's going to die for a lack of a second. But in clarification of your motion, counsel, I'm asking you to remove any stipulation that refers to Granbury Square Partners. We are talking about an agreement with Granbury Theater Company. We cannot put a string like that into this mix. It's not on our agenda. We can't do it.
It's not about agenda. There's already strings. We're saying, hey, they're going to put that money with that group, so let's put it together.
But that would have to be a separate agreement. We don't, we don't have the wherewithal on tonight's agenda to make an agreement that incorporates Granbury Square Partners. And I'm telling you, you can't make an agreement with Granbury Theater Company with a string attached to Granbury Square Partners. Please, just listen to me for a second.
All right, Mayor. I pull my-
I'll ask, I'll ask the counselor to, to address the issue.
I think this, I think the second's been pulled back. I think the second's been pulled back.
I can appreciate the fact that you're trying to get something done.
All right, he pulled it out.
All right. So, that motion's gone off the table. Thank you. Now then, if we can get another one out here that maybe works.
I'm about out of cough drops.
I understand. I'm about out of water.
And then I'm going to, but I would like to make a motion that we, that we go ahead and have Andrew draw up whatever plans he needs, whatever money he needs, and maybe two or three venues that he wants to use and utilize, and what it's going to take, so that we can have that at the table when we go through the budget review in a couple of weeks, just a couple of weeks, and that we can review this and that we can make, you know, whatever changes we need to it at that time.
You can't make the Granbury Theater Company jump a hurdle like that.
I'm asking him to give me some written stuff that we can look at during our budget review. That's all I'm asking.
Mayor, if they need ninety days, I'll go ninety days. Whatever they need, whatever you think they need, Mayor, it's fine with me.
Look, we were getting somewhere. Quite honestly, we were, we were getting somewhere. And now we're talking about pushing it off until after budget.
And you're talking about-
That's just two weeks, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
I said you're talking about pushing off further than that.
No, I'm not. I'm talking-
You said you want to jump through hurdles, is what you said.
Can we do the two weeks, Mayor?
I second the motion.
You can't, you, I'm sorry, but you cannot tell somebody out there, outside of this council, you can't tell them that they've got to present something back to us.
We just give blank checks?
I'm lost here. Why can't we?
I think, I think he's trying to table it, Mayor.
Attorney, attorney, what are you?
Trying to table it, counselor.
What are you saying?
That's what he's trying to do. That's not what I heard.
Well, I would like to know-
What is your intention here?
I would like to know during the budget review that we could put this on there and we'd know what kind of money we're spending.
Then, then you need to make it in a motion, motion of a postpone this item, okay? I don't want it contingent upon any paperwork coming back from Andrew Barris, because we can't do that.
We can do that. No, we can make a postpone.
You can postpone it until after your, your budget. So, can I, can I get you to rethink your motion about that? And entertain a motion to postpone until after the budget?
I'll entertain a motion that we postpone this till after the budget.
Second.
Now we've got a second. Any further discussion regarding this? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Make a note that the naysayer was Mr. Parsons. That motion passes. So, this will be postponed until after the budget review process, which is coming up July eighteenth and nineteenth, so it's very near. We'll be looking into this item. With that being said, let me see, are we there? Did we do it? There being no further business before this, counsel, this meeting is adjourned.